Welcome, everyone. The hour being seven P. M. on Wednesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Twillie City Council is meeting in a business meeting being held in the Twillie City Hall Council Chambers located at ninety North Main Street in Twillie, Utah. This is also being streamed on the Twillie City YouTube channel. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will please rise and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is a roll call. Councilwoman Manzio.
Present.
Councilman Graff.
Present.
Councilman McCall.
Present.
Councilman Hanson.
Present.
Councilman Hanson is joining us by phone. I'm Councilman Brady. I'm also present. We will move on to item three, which is our public comment period. We invite the public to come up. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less and that you state your name into the mic and then sign the paper over here. So the time is now the publics. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public comment period and we'll move on to item four, which is the mayor's community recognition award. This is presented by Debbie Nguyen, the mayor.
Thank you, Chairman and Council. This award has recently been created to honor and recognize any individual of any age in our community who gives back to the community, goes above and beyond. And we are going to be doing this award as often as we have people that are nominated and as we see all of these great people and what they do for our city. And tonight I would like to take a few minutes to thank our first responders around the county. We have had a lot of tragedy in our community recently. Last month, our first responders were called to enzyme engineering, where a car had crashed through the building and we lost Roseanne Davis in that terrible accident. Last week, a sweet eight-year-old boy, Dallin Cunningham, passed away after falling off a slide at Rose Springs Elementary School in Stansbury Park. And then on Monday night, our first responders were again called out, this time to the Settlement Canyon Reservoir on a rescue effort after teenage boys fell through the ice. Sadly, one of these young men, Jaden Davis, did not survive. I want to express my heartfelt and most sincere condolences to the families of those involved in each of these tragedies. We are grieving with them and we are heartbroken for them. It is a difficult job to do, especially when the results are devastating and painful. So I would like to thank our hometown heroes, especially those who aided in rescue efforts on Monday night, our Twillie City Fire Department, Twillie City Police Department, Twillie County Sheriff's Office, Twillie County Search and Rescue, Mountain West Ambulance, AirMed, Department of Public Safety Star Eight Helicopter, the Utah Highway Patrol, Department of Public Safety Dive Team, the North Twillie Fire District, Twillie County Fire Department, Twillie County Dispatch, M. C. O. T. Mental Health, Twillie County Peer Support Team, and a private company, Christensen and Griffith Construction, who provided specialized equipment, and to all of those who gave their support and their aid. This is a tremendous, large amount of people. Many of them were volunteers who give of their time and their effort for this community. And as we suffer these devastating losses, we have to remember to be grateful for those that we have in our community that will step up and serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nguyen. We'll move on to item five, which is the Twillie Technical College Student of the Year. And an annual update is presented by President Paul Hacking.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. It's a pleasure to be here with you this morning, this evening. Is our presentation available? It's coming? Okay, great. It's an absolute honor to be here with you and very grateful for our partnership and how we, as this community, work together and elevate each other. I feel very strongly in a smaller community like this that we have a feeling and a reality of ownership of our technical college that in larger areas of the state you don't get because this community had to fight so hard to get what we have. And because of that, I feel a sincere honor to and need to come on an annual basis and just give you an update on what we're doing. And I know your agenda is really full, so I'm going to try to be succinct. But one of the most important things that I think we can do is to give you an impression of who our students are and what we're trying to do in elevating our students. And there's no better way of doing that than letting one of our students represent over twelve-hundred students at Twillitec that were served last year. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce our Student of the Year, Derek Darcy, who will share his story with you. But I hope you'll remember that his story represents many other human lives that are being elevated, not just because of our efforts, but because of your efforts in helping us be here and be strong together. Derek?
Good evening, and thank you for having me. Thank you, Paul, for the introduction. It's an honor to be here today to speak about my journey as a student at Twillie Technical College. In October of two thousand and twenty, just before the height of the pandemic, I was diagnosed with degenerative disc disease. At the time, I was working at the University of Utah Hospital as a custodial supervisor. The stress of the pandemic, combined with the newly diagnosed medical condition, led to some conversations with my wife. I knew that I would not be capable of working in my current career much longer, more than a few years at best. Several topics needed to be discussed. After the age of fifty, switching careers becomes more complicated. As a husband and a father of three, I was the breadwinner. Could we afford school or job training? Could I reduce my work hours? All difficult questions. And bear in mind, this conversation began at the height of the pandemic. As someone who has always loved technology and has a work history in the tech field, I began looking into the cybersecurity field. I looked at some boot camps as well as some community colleges, and I was still undecided. A friend of mine asked me to look into Twillie Technical College. After a brief phone conversation, I stopped by. The staff is friendly, professional, and courteous. The facility is well-maintained and stays current in the industry. In addition, the Occupational Advisory Board helps ensure that Twillitec remains at the forefront of what employers seek. My interest was piqued. The Financial Aid Office helped me acquire the reengagement grant, which took a significant burden of how I pay for school off my shoulders. The Scheduling Office worked with me to ensure I could schedule classes around my work schedule. I started attending Twillitec in August of two thousand and twenty-one. I was a student twenty-four hours a week. I commuted another ten hours a week to Salt Lake City, and I worked forty hours a week. I used my lunch break from Twillitec to pick up my pre-K daughter and bring her home to her grandmother. I averaged four and a half hours of sleep a day for nearly fourteen months. Why would I go to such lengths? Most notably was completing my training as quickly as possible to pivot into a new career. As for my time at Twillitec, the time went by far too quick. The faculty, the students, and the atmosphere are all conducive to learning. The hands-on training prepares you for the real-world environment, and sharing knowledge with others makes it seem less like a class and more like a family. Instructor Bill Hill takes the time to get to know each student, and he has an open-door policy and is there to assist you during your educational journey. The key word is assist. He is not going to give you the answer. He will show you how to find it. I would love to say that my journey was pain-free and easy, but it was not. I didn't pass every certification exam the first time, and after my first exam, Bill and I talked. He explained that I was ready and that I had the knowledge. Then he explained to me that test-taking is about a specific answer. He told me to slow down, read the question, read the answers, and then reread the question. And when it came to classless subnetting, I struggled. I fell behind on my work for nearly a week, and Bill worked with me to help me understand how classless subnetting worked. As a fifty-year-old-plus employment candidate, I needed every advantage I could leverage. A personal letter of recommendation for President Paul Hacking was essential to me, but the president's list achievement would require one hundred percent of work completion and ninety percent attendance for six consecutive months. Here I was, twenty-four hours behind schedule. I knew this as I had spreadsheets throughout my entire time at Twillitec to help me keep track of my completion rate. Two weekends of studying, foregoing time with my family. Bill was concerned and asked if I would make the president's list. Why? Because Bill knew how much this meant to me. Bill could see how it affected me. I did make the president's list, four consecutive times, in fact, only, which had only been done by three students. nearing the completion of my training, Bill reviewed my resume. He gave me helpful pointers, and he went over some technical interview questions that I might encounter. His work paid off. There were several times that I felt better prepared when I was asked one of these questions during an interview. Kim in the Work Placement Center is extremely helpful with resume reviews. She'll help you prepare a resume and even conduct mock interviews to help overcome interview jitters. I completed my training in September of two thousand and twenty-two, and I pivoted into a new career in November of two thousand and twenty-two. Now, some may wonder why an individual with my certifications wasn't hired sooner. The fact of the matter is, I was selective in the companies I was submitting my resume with. In a highly competitive market and a career field where two to four years of experience is preferred, I was carefully selecting which companies I was applying for. For the most part, individuals with greater experience were offered the job. And to be honest, the first few times, it struck my pride. I felt what is known as imposter syndrome. Then I recalled what a drill instructor told me thirty-five years ago, which I believe to be a Martin Luther King quote. He said, "Keep moving forward. Crawling is acceptable. Falling is acceptable. Puking is acceptable. Crying is acceptable. Pain is acceptable. Quitting is not." I currently work for Netwise Inc., which is a managed service provider in Murray, Utah, and I'm proud to be one of their staff. In closing, I will state that Twillitec was there for the entire educational process, from enrollment, financial assistance, job-related training, networking, resume and interview skills, to job placement. I could not have done this without their assistance. Theodore Roosevelt stated it best when he said, "It is hard to fail, but it is worse to have never tried to succeed." I thank President Hacking and all of the Twillitec faculty for everything that they do for the students and for the community. Thank you.
I think Twillitec is pretty good at transmitting and teaching the technical skills needed for these occupations, but the work habit skills that Derek comes with, I don't can't take much credit for that. He represents a character and a, and, and drive that is exhibited by a lot of our students. And unfortunately, I wish we could have a magic door that we could have our students walk through and everybody would have those types of work habits. But truly, he is a wonderful example, and I'm very proud of him. Thank you for recognizing him tonight. He had to run to a parent-teacher conference, so that tells you how busy he is. I'm having a hard time, Holly. It's like this. Oh, right there? Fantastic. Thank you. We are at a new stage of our history. And as you know, when we first moved out here in two thousand and nine and didn't have a building, there were a lot of people in the state that thought we would just blow away and go away. But Twillie City stepped up and helped us secure our building that we have that we're so proud of. Without your help, without your commitment to this community through technical education, and without the support of other partners in this community, we would not be here. And I'm so proud that we are now ready to take the next step. And I'm excited to tell you a little bit about where that is right now. And I'm trying to be patient, Holly. There we go. First of all, our Custom Fit program brings in three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year that we help subsidize training for local businesses. We are expanding that and adding another fifty thousand dollars to the legislature this year. And it's because businesses are taking advantage of that. The first couple of years I was here, we did not spend out our allocation. Now, we're allocating it by mid-year, which tells you about over a hundred different businesses that are helping to educate their employees and making them more competitive. And a lot of that is within partnership with Twillie City. We recently passed our every-six-year accreditation visit. There's over a thousand different criterion that is looked at by the Council on Occupational Education that, that accredits over six hundred different technical skills around the country. And we had our visit with one little finding that we were easily corrected. I'm very proud that we'll be reaffirmed for another six years. It just goes to the quality of programs that we're offering. Let's say, over the last five years, our enrollment, let's see, let's see if I can go back first. I think I didn't, wasn't as patient, Holly, as you told me to be. Oh, see? There I go. There you go. Maybe I could just say next. How about that? That'd be great. Okay. So over the last five years, our head count has gone up by fifty-two percent. There's not another school in the state that can show this type of growth. Next. And with that, hours of enrollment, which I think is a much better measurement of how many hours a student has paid to be there, is up by a hundred and one percent. So this tremendous growth has come with all sorts of interesting challenges, but I, challenges, but I love the challenges that it comes with. Next. Just a glimpse of our student demographic. I'm very proud that overall in Twillie County, our Hispanic population's around fourteen percent. Last year, about twenty-two percent of our student population was Hispanic or Latino. We are working with our Wendover High School, teaching an early morning and now half-day part of our industrial maintenance program that we're doing through the Internet. And a lot of those students, after graduating high school, are coming here, but housing is a huge problem. And if we're going to offer, offer them opportunities that we have here, we've got to work on that. One solution I've thought of is trying to create something like a foreign exchange student, where those students could live in the homes of, of citizens in our community for four days a week, and they go home on the weekends. There's all sorts of things we're looking at, but this is something that I'm, I think we really need to do something to try to help these people because they, it's very difficult to find housing for, for students like this. Next. I'm also very proud of our alliance with the school district. As you know, the, we do not spend any time fighting amongst each other. We do what's best for our students. And if that's best for Twillitec to do a certain program or for the school district, the, the advantage we have is that often that there won't be enough high school students to warrant a program. But if we can put adults and high school students together, then we can justify a full-time teacher, which makes a lot of sense for our community. But it also allows high school students to come into our building and see the whole pathway through healthcare, for example, and see other opportunities that are there. So working together with the school district and with Utah State has been fantastic for us, especially in our nursing program. Next. As you know, we, every one of our programs is led by Occupational Advisory Committee member, which brings a lot of people from different businesses into our building twice a year to review our program and our curriculum, and also solidifies our partnerships. Next. As, as you can easily imagine, a lot of our students face a lot of non-academic barriers to success. We did a survey last year of mental health-related issues, and about forty-three percent of our students identified as struggling with depression or anxiety. I was shocked by our adult students identifying this, that, and about sixty-five percent said that they're often feel unhappy in life in general, and about twenty percent had thoughts of, of this life not being worth it. And with that, we worked very hard to get us a mental health counselor that could help us. We've always done well with student advising, placing people in the right program. But when students are struggling with life in general, and it's not related to the classroom, we've not really been able to help much with that. And so next, last year, we, I thought I put a picture in there. I guess I didn't. Anyway, we hired Kim Herrera. If any of you know Kim, she used to be a counselor at Stansbury. She was working at the State Office of Education. She's now working for us. And she, during her first year, put together a mental health and wellness program. And it's going, it's throughout the whole institution. We're now, every employee is now trained in mental health first aid, and we're able to identify better students struggling. And just, just a couple stories. A student in a program was identified as, as really struggling with mental health. And the student was referred, I'll, I'll call this student Tony. Tony was referred to Kim, and Kim was, gave Tony some initial counseling. But we also have outsourced with a mental health provider in our community when students are beyond what she should be doing in, in her office, that we can refer her out. This Tony stopped responding to both counselors, and over the, the break, we had law enforcement do a wellness check. The officer reported, "Thank goodness we found him in time." Tony was taken to the emergency room, and working with both counselors, we were able to get him back into his program, and he's now on track to graduate. That's one of many stories. I could tell you that I really didn't really even understand the depths of, of the struggles that some people are having. And so I'm so glad that we now have services in that area. Certainly, we're not mental health providers, per se, but we're able to get them resources in the community to help our students that are struggling. And I think, and I know it's paying off already in a big way. Next. Oh, I want to tell you about our building expansion. As you know, last year, we were funded just under twenty-five million dollars. Next. As you can imagine, the, we have been doing the architectural and planning and developing the construction documents. The legislature, when they approved that funding, they didn't want all the buildings to be bid at the same time, so they said that buildings such as ours could not start until after this legislative session. So basically, we were stuck planning for a whole year. And during that process, when we set, when we requested the twenty-five million dollars, cost escalations at that time was estimated to be around eight percent this year. Well, it's been closer to about twenty-two percent. As anybody knows, with our high school going up, costs are just out of control. So our building is about two-point-seven million dollars over budget right now. We, we have worked on a plan to cut really important things out of our budget to get it under control. But thank goodness, this, this session, the legislature has indicated that they're willing to help those projects that, through no fault of their own, without increasing the scope of the project, have been over budget. So we have our fingers crossed, and I haven't seen our name on a list yet, but I've been assured that, that they are going to help us with this over, our cost overruns, which will allow us to put everything back in. With that, having been said, Holly, we should start our construction in April. We'll bid in March after we have, have that two-point-seven million dollars identified through the legislature. And with that, we should be finished around September of two thousand and twenty-four. It's going to be a challenge, of course, with having, it's not like we're building a new building. We're expanding our existing building, and then there's a building behind that we're remodeling. But it's going to have a lot of noise running around, and I'm sure it's going to be disruptive for students and for, for, for the community. But I promise you, when this is done, it will be well worth it. And Holly, can we just, maybe just five seconds on each one of these pictures and just kind of go through the next few pictures? This just gives you an idea of how the building will be expanded, the orange, and as part of that, across the street. Holly, we just stay here for a second. I'm very grateful for the mayor and for your willingness to help us with some issues. Right behind our building is a warehouse that we purchased from the school district at a very much partnership price, which I'm very grateful for. But you have a pump house on that property, and we're working to make sure that that pump house is protected and that the city is able to do everything you need to do, but at the same time that we make sure that it fits in with the logistics and the aesthetics of the new building and the, we're going to be doing a, in every state building, one percent of the project, the legislature sets aside for an art project to enhance the beauty of the, of the state project. So we're doing an outdoor landscaping art project between the pump house and the warehouse, which will now be just a beautiful school building. You'll notice it's a warehouse when we're done, I promise. But I'm really grateful for the mayor and for the city engineer working with us to make that work. And this gives you an idea of, we want to put up some sort of, as you, as you know, we have that rusted metal on our building. Some of those panels will be coming off as part of the expansion. We're going to take that and put it around the pump house and make it just fit into the, to the aesthetics of the building. Thank you. This gives you another idea of how big this is. It'll basically triple the size of our diesel program and add an automotive component and add a separate cosmetology wing on the, the left side. And the second floor also, when the first building was built, the, the budget did not allow for the second floor above the nursing program to be built, so we're fixing that. Not only we, we adding a second floor, but we're expanding that out further. And this gives you some idea. Just, it's good. Thank you. I don't know. I get goosebumps looking at this. And I know how hard this community worked. I mean, I've done this before. I know how hard it takes to get a building in a community this size through the legislature. So to even have the existing building that we have is a miracle. But now to be able to double the size of our programmatic space is even a greater miracle that would not have happened without Twillie City. So I'm here with tremendous gratitude for you. And that kind of gives you an idea of what that warehouse will look across the street. I also want to just express my gratitude for many, many other areas. When we have problems, it's, we never feel like it's just us. And recently, I needed to, we had a problem with our CDL program. I was able to call the mayor, and she quickly used contacts that she had to help fix that for us that, that I wasn't able to do with my contacts. And it just, I'm just so proud of how we work together and as And it just, I'm just so proud of how we work together, and as, as a smaller community is, that we can benefit. Also, with, with your city police, and with the sheriff, and with Grantsville, we were asked to start a police academy several years ago. We just started our next cohort with eight students. Eight students sounds really low, but when we look at police academies around the nation, there's places like Baltimore that just had a, a class finished with eighteen students. And other places that, you know, Salt Lake Community College just graduated seven. It's, it's telling of our society that we need to fix this. We need to incentivize people and respect law enforcement for all the things they've done, including what the mayor talked about earlier today. And we're very excited to have eight students, and we also were just started a brand-new EMT program that we haven't had before. So, EMT is no longer taught at the hospital. It's now going to be taught through us, which we're excited, because next year, we can add that with high school students and adults to do that. And last thing I'll end with, and with, and I'd love to hear any questions if you have, but three times a year, we survey our students, and the last survey, ninety-seven percent of our students said that they would recommend their teacher, or the student, or the college as a whole, to a friend or a neighbor. This is a great indication to me, and we don't take this for granted. We work really hard to earn this respect, but it's extremely important that, for us, for everyone that works at Twilla Tech, that every student feels respected and dignif, dignity, and that they feel wanted and safe at our institution. We work really hard to create that culture, and when students respond this way in a survey like this, it makes me feel that we're on the right track. Thank you very much for your support. Thank you for coming to our events when you can. I know you're very busy, but I feel your support, and we're very grateful for you. Any questions that you have for me?
Just a quick comment. I'm, I'm very proud to have Twilla Tech College in our community, and, and I love seeing your energy and, and your direction, and, and I love seeing the students that come out and, and all these success stories, so thank you.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Paul. All right, we're going to move on to item six, which is a public hearing and motion on ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero-five. In ordinance of the Twilla City Council, mending the standards and qualifications of the planned unit development zoning overlay for eighty-six-point-seven acres of property located in the area, generally in approximately two-thousand North Copper Canyon Drive, known as Western Acres. This is presented by Jim Bolser, the Community Development Director.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. So, this, this is a little atypical of a zoning map that you're used to seeing, in that we're actually not going to change the map at all. In fact, what we're looking to amend here with this proposal is an amendment to an assigned PUD, Planned Unit Development Designation, which is an overlay to the zoning district assigned, in this case, to the Western Acres Development. This is the approximate outline of the entirety of the Western Acres Development, just to the east of Main Street and on the south side of the road out to Pine Canyon. Pine, in fact, called Pine Canyon Road, ironically. And just to the west of Copper Canyon Elementary, if, for those that are familiar with the area. So, this is the conceptual land plan that was submitted with the original PUD for assignment to this property. The original PUD did two things. Number one, it reassigned the zoning for this project to two different designations, the MR-16 and the R-17. Actually, I think it might be R-18 now that I think about it, but single-family development, and then the MR-16. So, the lots that you're seeing, particularly along the top and to the right, that are in yellow, are the portions that are the single-family homes. The remainder in the towns and, tans and browns are varying types of townhome product for this project, that totals eight-hundred-and-eleven units. This zoning map amendment and the assignment of the original PUD was done through ordinance twenty-fifty, twenty-twenty dash fifty, obviously in the year twenty-twenty. That PUD did, the establishment of the PUD is a little bit different than what you may see for a PUD in, in other communities, in that our PUD, and it is R-17, I see up there now, so I was correct the first time, I apologize. Our PUD ordinance does not allow for an increase in density. It only allow, from the base zone. It only allows for what we refer to as configuration changes, things like setbacks, things like, in this case, they talk about dwelling sizes and, and materials that are allowed onto the different units within the, the PUD. So, what you're seeing here on the screen, the left-hand column is the base city code requirements for both the R-17 zone at the top and the MR-16 at the bottom. On the right-hand side, the right-hand column is the, are, are the provisions that were amended through the adoption of the PUD. So, in fact, what you're seeing in the right-hand column is what are the applicable regulations aside from the base zoning tenants of the city code, specifically and only to the Western Acres Development. So, you can see what's, what's changed here. These are what's in place. These were adopted by ordinance twenty-twenty dash fifty. So, there's two things with the existing proposal before you this evening that would amend these regulations here. One involves the second-to-last row under the MR-16, where you see exterior materials. This is, now at the bottom, you're seeing what is proposed under the current PUD amendment, the ordinance under your consideration this evening. The first row builds onto what you're seeing under the, for exterior materials of the MR-16 zone. And then, the second and bottom row addresses a request to amend the requirement for covered parking spaces. These would only be applicable to the MR-16 portion of the project, not the single-family prod, portion of the project. That is the majority of the project, of course, but as you saw on the land plan, but this would only apply to those MR-16 areas. Very simply, the, the right-hand column in that very bottom section is what's proposed with the ordinance this evening. I wanted to give you some background as to how we got to this point and build up to this. The Planning Commission has held their own public hearing on this proposal and forwarded a negative recommendation for your consideration by a six-to-one vote. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments from the council? All right. This is a public hearing, so we will open the time up to the public, just the same rules that I stated before, that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The applicant, we'll give you time after the public hearing if, okay. All right, and turn the time over to the public. Okay, seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing, and all the applicant can come up and.
Hello, council. My name is Mike DiCarlo. I'm with D.R. Horton. I appreciate having a chance to meet with you before the meeting and go over some of the questions or concerns you may have had, and I hope you've had a chance to go out and see the other community in Grantsville that I recommended you go to, to see the material on those homes out there, and what it, what it would actually look like. I just wanted to bring this sample piece back and let you look at it. You'll see there's multiple holes, and it can, it attaches, each, each one attaches on the interview there. So, it, it, it really does hold up well against wind. I know that was a concern for a couple of the council members. I also wanted to clarify one other thing about the materials on the external. It's not going to be just all vinyl. We do have in our elevations, depending on the, the floor plan of the townhome, there will be some masonry, such as brick or stacked stone. I'm not sure which the architects will decide upon, but it will not be a hundred percent vinyl, just so. I think the application may not have specified that correctly.
Do you know what percentage will not be vinyl?
I, I don't. It's not a lot, looking at the elevations. I asked the architectural team if they had a percentage, and they didn't have a calculation for me. It, it's not a, a huge amount, but it does kind of break it up. It makes it look better.
It's not a huge amount of stone?
Right, right. Good clarification. And then, I wanted to just explain the why. And I've, you know, we've, not everyone may have heard this, so I just wanted to explain it again, or run it past you again. You know, we've sold homes in Lake Point, Stansberry Park, here in Twilla, and in Grantsville, and the majority of those homes are financed by a mortgage company that we, that we have, a subsidiary company. And so, I asked them to go in and, and look at those applications and see who our demographics were, for who actually purchased the homes. And so, let me just read to you, the typical employers, we have the school district, the fire department, UDOT, Army Depot, the Air National Guard, and the state of Utah. Those are our typical homeowners buying these homes. Also, while I've been here in the county, go to the county offices, and some of the clerks there have asked me about the project, and they, they're asking me if it's going to be affordable. I've had, we have a volunteer Twilla Fire personnel that is looking at our townhomes out in Grantsville that are being sold right now, and he would prefer to live here in Twilla, for obvious reasons. Excuse me. And he's very interested in buying, buying our Pioneer product, that's the, the carport product. So, that's, that gives you an indication of who your buyer is. Also, they're in, the average age is in their mid-thirties. Sixty-nine percent are married. Fifty percent of them are dual-income homes, and the average household income is an average of seventy-two thousand dollars. So, you can see why we're pushing to make this affordable. So, I, I don't, and when I, when I do that, I want to, I want to just make a, add a few other points to this. To us, affordability doesn't mean cheap. It's quality. It's a quality home. We take good care of our homeowners. We treat them like our mother. We have, in the company nationwide, we, you know, we're the largest home builder. We've built eighty-four thousand homes last year. Our year, physical year ended in September. We have the, we have the number-one customer service team, or, or, I should say, rating in the company, in terms of customer satisfaction and going through the process of, of watching the home get finished up and, and as they move in, and any, any last remaining items that need to be fixed on, on the, you know, on, on their list of the final walkthrough to the, to getting the financing and so on. So, and then on top of that, we, we have a great warranty team, and that warranty team takes care of our homeowners as well. We're not going to just, just let them go. We'll, we'll go back years in the past if something happened to the house that we feel we're responsible for, we'll take care of that as a warranty item. And then, in addition to this, because these are townhomes, and this vinyl is an exterior, exterior surface material on the buildings, we have an HOA company, and that HOA company has to have, they have an insurance on the, on the building as well. So, it's not just a homeowner's insurance, but it's also, it's a special policy for townhomes, and they have that insurance. So, if there's wind damage, they will make sure that, that any wind damage on the vinyl or exterior surface of the roof would be repaired. And we want this to look nice and stay nice. We have a professional landscape plan that's, you know, part of the, part of our application, part of our plat, approval process, and we'll have professional landscapers install it, and our HOA company will maintain it. When we turn that HOA over to this, to the residents, once we've left, it will be, have a, have a sufficient cash reserve to take care of any future problems for years in the future. The way it's set up, it's, it's designed so that cash reserve will, will always stay So, I don't know, if, do you have any questions or any concerns we can address?
So, the condos in Stansberry Park, do those have any siding on them?
The, the park townhomes, right on the, they are, I believe they're on just cement board. It's fiber cement board.
So, this is the point I'm going to, to make. So, when this was presented, I, I remember it pretty vividly. I was against this project for multiple reasons, but the way it was presented was not what we're going to see if this change is made. I, I've told you multiple times, I oppose this change for multiple reasons. I want them to look like the Stansberry ones. I think the cement board is a better option than vinyl. I think that's how it was sold to the council, as well as being a, a product that would, I don't want to make it sound like vinyl is not the best thing, but I don't think vinyl's the best thing, so I'll say that bluntly, and I want them to look like the Stansberry townhouses that I think was out, was put out by the developer. I know the economy's changed significantly, but I don't think that means the product needs to change, and I think it still is attainable housing. D.R. Horton builds beautiful houses, beautiful townhomes, but I a hundred percent am against changing this. We've had discussions about this with other property and developers who want to decrease and add more vinyl, and I think we've been pretty consistent on that, or I've tried to be consistent on that. So, that's all my comments. I don't know if anyone else has comments or questions for Mike?
Mr. Chair, I, in all transparency, I will just say that I did meet with Mr. DiCarlo on an individual basis to hear his presentation, and I feel the same way. I mean, I, I told you then, I just feel like affordable is the wrong word, because there's no such thing as affordable housing right now, and I don't feel like these changes actually change that significantly for the people buying the home. And I would echo Chair Brady's comments as well, as far as the aesthetics of the buildings. I mean, I, I drove around the communities you suggested. I've driven through Lake Point and Stansberry. They aren't all vinyl, the look. And as it's written with no restrictions, I, I just can't support that. I, I really think that we need to withhold our, uphold our standards that we've set for, I think we deserve a beautiful community, and I think you build beautiful homes, and it should stay that way.
Sure. No, I, it's your decision. We're just trying to make it more affordable for those buyers that, that can't afford a home, that are renting now. The Gardener Policy Institute just came out with a new statistic that says those people who are currently renting have been priced out of the market. Only twelve percent of those renters will be able to afford a home. I don't see home prices coming down, so those people will be eternal renters. They will never own a home. So, anything we can do, and you can do, to help them own a home, is only to your benefit and the city's benefit.
So, I have a comment, and I, I've been in both situations of a homeowner and a renter, and, and I, one of the things that, I'll have a comment on the vinyl, but removing the covered parking, I also think is problematic. As, as one who, who utilizes covered parking, I know the difference, and anyone who's ever lived in an apartment complex knows the difference between covered parking and not-covered parking in a Utah winter, and it's a huge difference. And, and so, that's one issue I just wanted to bring up that was a little bit different than another perspective, only because I intimately know that. But in regards to vinyl, again, I've had homes that were vinyl, stucco, all the above, and, and the problem with the ordinance that, that, that I looked at and I struggle with is there's no limitation. And so, and while I appreciate, and, and I, and I believe you when you no limitation. And so, and while I appreciate, and I, and I believe you when you said you would put stone in the front, somebody else might not. Somebody else will say, well, you know what? We're a business, and businesses are for profit, which I think they should be, right? This is free enterprise. And when we have that standard, there is no incentive to not go with full vinyl. And, and so there will be others who simply say, and again, I'm not saying you, I'm saying businesses.
This PUD zone is just for our community. It's for, for, for our specific development. There's no one else going to make that decision for us.
I understand, but it, it becomes a slippery slope when we start approving one PUD and another one comes up and wants others. It, it, it's a trend, because once we do it, in fairness to others, that's a consideration that becomes a point, that once we've changed one standard, another PUD, a future development could come in and say, look, you know, why would you treat us differently? And for us, that, that is something that's a-
You're thinking we're setting a precedence.
Right. Well, it's, it's, it's how I treat ordinances and how I look at. I have to treat them fairly. And if they're all things equal, why would I change how I treat another PUD if all things are equal? And if they made that argument, I could not give it a logical response other than, I just don't like what you're presenting. And I don't want to do that. I want to be consistent. I want to be fair to all the applicants. And so that's another factor that concerns me, that if I were to act on this, and I understand and I appreciate about affordable housing, I truly do, and I would say attainable housing, because it's, it's not whether it's affordable, it's whether you can get it.
That is a better way to-
But anyway, I don't mean to go on or to belabor the point, but I just want to put on the record why I'm not comfortable. Again, not solely with your product, and I'm not attacking what you're saying, because I, I hear the sincerity and I appreciate what you're trying to do. But I just want to share the perspective that I had on, on these two factors.
Sure.
Thanks, Mike.
Hi, Councilman Mayor Adam Loser with D.R. Horton. I, I really appreciate your feedback, and you're right, we do build a beautiful home. And I just wanted to, to build on your comment. Back in the, the table, it said that the city code default was 50% vinyl. We would certainly consider that if we added that additional restriction, if we were allowed to use vinyl, a maximum of 50% could be vinyl, and the rest could be cementatious fiberboard, the, the board and baton that you see. And I'd even say zero vinyl on the front elevation of the units would also be a possibility for us, that we, that would only be either stucco or cement fiberboard or stone. So those are some options that we would, we would love to, to entertain with the council. If you feel like you, you can't support it in any way, we, we would make those concessions.
Thank you.
I think, Jim, isn't the, isn't the current, well, the current MR-16 code says that vinyl siding can be used, right? But with this PUD, was it different?
Yes. So one thing to keep in mind, Holly, if we can put the clerk chair back up and show the, the table here. One thing to keep in mind is that the original PUD ordinance, 2020-50, was based on the design standards at that time, which were that base 50%. The, as you may recall, we've done since then an amendment to the ordinance that changed how those percentages are calculated and clarified them. So what you're seeing here with that 50% callout is actually based off of an ordinance that was prior to, but it was in effect at the time 2020-50 came before you. So it's actually a little bit different now. I don't know that it necessarily changes what they've just talked about with the fronts and sides, because there are, there are still percentages for both. But a blanket 50 like you're seeing here is an outdated code. But where that was the original ordinance that was presented to you, that's what you're seeing on the screen, is these are, what you're seeing on the screen, in fact, are literally screen captures out of those ordinances.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is there any other discussion needed from the council?
Okay. I just want to say thanks, and thanks to the staff. They've been great working with, to work with. Just thank you.
But the 50% takes it back to where it was originally, where it should be, just about.
Yeah. Well, well then, that being said, why don't, why doesn't the PUD just say that they follow current city code for MR-16? I mean, that's what we're asking.
I think that's what I was trying to get at, like-
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I mean, if it's the city code, then yeah, other developers are doing the same thing.
And that would basically, we would just be approving, well, we won't need to approve this ordinance then.
Well, we would, because they have a PUD that states something kind of different, right?
No, that's the proposed changes. But if we're saying that they just need to follow the, the original MR-16?
Yeah. So i- if, if that's an item you'd like to entertain, you would still need to approve something for two reasons. Number one, that addresses one of the two things they're requesting, the part, the covered parking being the other. But then also, if you were to, unless you were to approve a change back to the base standard, they would still be living with what was approved in ordinance 2020-50.
Just slightly different.
Correct, yes.
I'm still comfortable with how it is. I, I still, the way, the discussion with the council at the time was that, in my understanding, it would look like the Stansbury townhomes, which they don't have the vinyl that. So I'm, I support it just how it is, that we just leave it, but.
I'm fine with that. I'm also opposed to uncovering the parking, so.
I agree, yes. All right, we'll all entertain a motion, if anyone wants to make one.
What is the motion? Oh, go ahead.
You want me to?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I, I move, I move that we deny the request for ordinance 2023-05, an ordinance of the Twilla City Council amending the standards and qualifications of the planned unit development zoning overlay for 86.7 acres of property located in the area generally at approximately 2,000 North Copper Canyon Drive, known as Western Acres.
I'll second the motion. So we have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from myself. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson? I don't know if he's there. Okay, we'll come back to Councilman Hanson. Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson, are you there? Yeah. I'm Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. So that does not pass with the 4-0. I was unable to get Councilman Hanson on the phone, so. Okay, we'll move on to item seven, which is a public hearing and motion on ordinance 2023-09, an ordinance of the Twilla City Council vacating a dedicated right-of-way intended as a walkway path west from 630 East Street at approximately 217 North, presented by Jim Bolser.
Thank you. This is another one that's a little bit different than what I've presented to you in, in recent times. Over the last few meetings, you've seen me present a couple of vacations of easements, particularly PUEs that exist on people's property, primarily for the purpose of allowing an accessory structure to be constructed on their lot a little bit closer to the property lines. In this case, we're actually dealing with a dedicated right-of-way, and in fact, not even your typical dedicated right-of-way. As the council's aware, a right-of-way is, in, in common terms, a road. But it can be other things, such as a pathway. That's exactly what it is in this case. The process for vacating a right-of-way and an easement, in fact, are largely identical. And so it's, it's the same considerations, the same process. We're just dealing with a different manner in which the property came to us. With an easement, of course, the property doesn't come to us at all. It's just a right of use for that area of property. In terms of a right-of-way, it's actually becomes city-owned property for the purpose of some, in this case, transportation facility for pedestrians. So very simply, on the aerial, there is a very skinny walkway along 630 East that goes to a vacant property currently. It goes right between these two pieces of property that you can see here on the aerial. It's, it's 10 feet wide and runs the length of their properties from six, the edge of the 630 East right-of-way back to that vacant property. A little bit of interesting history here with this little right-of-way. I don't know that the city knew we had this until not too long ago, this little walkway. The plat that dedicated to us was recorded in 1997. But if you look at the property, and I should have included a picture, and I apologize I didn't, there's, both properties on either side have fenced it to exist right between them. But frankly, it hasn't been well-maintained, likely because, I don't know that we really knew we had it, frankly. But it's there. It was recorded. Another interesting little, little tidbit on this one, this, if you look at the county's property maps, this doesn't exist. Those two properties go right up to each other. There's no 10-foot gap in there. But all of the recorded documents with the, the plats and whatnot all have it very clearly. In fact, this is the plat, and I'll zoom in to show it to you, because it's, being in 1997, the scan is, and the printed original is, is probably not the quality you're used to seeing of modern plats. But it's on the very left-hand side. In fact, there it is. You can see right there very clearly, 10-foot right-of-way dedicated to the city of Twilla, that's us. And it's that little strip between those two properties. So it very much does exist. You'll also notice on the left-hand side that the vacant property that is vacant today is identified as school property. Originally, that property was intended for a school site, which makes this walkway perfectly logical, to get from the neighborhood to that school site without having to go all the way out and around to the street, to 7th Street, and then walk up 7th Street to get to that school site. This gives a direct access right from this neighborhood to the school. Unfortunately, that school has not materialized, and in fact, it's not even owned by the school district. It's owned by a private individual, who we have talked conceptually with on a couple of occasions about the development potential for that site. Nevertheless, this walkway really becomes expendable because there is no intended school coming in, and that was its intent. So very simply, outlined in red is, is this little 10-foot strip. And I hope this next one shows up, because it's, this is another little oddity about, not as well as I hoped, but this is another little oddity about vacating a right-of-way that was dedicated to the city as a part of this plat, is each property owner on each side gets half. It's not given to one or the other. Each one gets half automatically. So each one of them get five feet added to their property with the recording of this ordinance. And, and by way of note, your vote tonight, typically with an ordinance, is the end of the line. That's where it ends. But with the vacation of, of easements and rights-of-way, we actually have to record the ordinance once you all have signed it with the county recorder's office. So in the very, very near future, when we get the ordinance over to the county recorder, that will end it, and effectively they will each have five more feet on their property. I have had conversations with both property owners, one of which actually was the one who brought this to our attention. They are both amenable to what is being proposed, and I, I dare say both were relatively excited for it. So they have been notified, they are aware, and I have not heard any level of objection from either of them. But that, that's, makes this a little bit different than ones you've seen before, but that's kind of the, the history of what brings us here tonight and what's going on with this little strip. So with that, I'd be happy answering questions you may have.
I just have one question, because, you know, I have to ask it because I'm the trail person. I know the school doesn't own that anymore, but would there ever be the need for a trail there to connect to anything else? Because, you know, I, I worry about that.
Sure. The question that I would have in response to that is, I don't think there's anything to connect to next to it other than another road. So do we, that, I don't know that it would be a highly desirable connection to maintain for the city, but not knowing the ultimate development next door, it's kind of difficult to say. But from the conversations we've had, I don't believe they're preparing for that, and I don't know that it would really lead to anywhere other than another street.
Okay.
I was just going to say, of course, the one property owner who didn't have to do anything is happy, right? He gets five feet more, because his neighbor.
Yeah. Well, and frankly, they're both interested in, in including it with their property and getting it cleaned up. So they're a little less overgrown, so they're, I think they're, at least from my conversations, I, I understood they were both pleased.
That's great. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Oh, Roger has some.
Jim, could you just walk them through the statutory finding they're required to make that's in the ordinance?
Yeah. So there, there's a statutory requirement out of the state law that we've written into the ordinance for you. And I'm going to pull it up real fast in my document here so that I read it correctly. But there is, there are several findings that you need to make, including that the public use of the right-of-way was, was intended to provide access, let me back that up because I, I didn't read that well. The public use this right-of-way was intended to provide access for has been sold and will no longer be developed for public purposes. The right-of-way has no current or anticipated future use as a pedestrian right-of-way and serves no public purpose. And then, of course, you're holding your public hearing here this evening. Among other more, more secondary findings, the primary is that there, there isn't a utility need for it, and there isn't a determined public purpose for this right-of-way any longer. Did I hit that appropriately, Roger?
Right, thank you. So those findings support, the general findings that you're required to make is that there is good cause, and Jim just read what the good cause is, and that there would be no injury to any person, including financial injury, and, and Jim just read you that as well. But those two findings have to be part of your motion. You don't have to repeat them in detail because they are part of the ordinance, but you would have to at least refer to the findings in the ordinance to approve it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
You do need a public hearing first.
Oh, thank you. I'm always jumping ahead. All right, this is also a public hearing, so we will open the time up to the public. Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve ordinance 2023-09, an ordinance of the Twilla City Council vacating a dedicated right-of-way intended as a walkway path west from 630 East Street at approximately 217 North, based on a good cause and findings found in the ordinance itself.
Second. We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
And I'm Councilwoman Brady, I also vote aye. That passes 5-0. We'll move on to item eight, which is Resolution 2023-12, a resolution of the Twilla City Council consenting to the mayor's appointment of Ken Spence and Rebecca Peterson to the Twilla City Historic Preservation, Perservation, I can't say that word, Commission, presented by Jared Stewart, the Economic Development Director.
Good evening, council. Thank you. This is a, is an awesome group, and, and just a fun, fun, fun projects to work on as we get into it. So the Historic Preservation Commission, as you know, reviews opportunities that we have to preserve Twilla's history and heritage, specifically to review properties that might be nominated for the National Register of Historic Places, and makes recommendations to the Twilla City Council on actions we could and should take to, towards the ends of preserving our history and heritage. We have three members serving currently on that group, and we have two others who have applied at, as we solicited for new members. We had two, two reach out, and actually a third very recently, who's not listed here, but Ken Spence and Rebecca Peterson. I'll, I'll just read their, their little bios that we have included in your packet briefly. So Ken, Ken Spence is a long-term resident of Twilla City, and he's probably listening on YouTube tonight. He's a past member of the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and has worked approximately 40 years as an architect, and still maintains an active architect license, although he's retired from his, his, his primary career. He's going to be a wonderful addition to this group, and we, we really will value and appreciate his experience as an architect as we get into some of these downtown, you know, preservation efforts, I think. And Rebecca Peterson, who is, has joined us today, we appreciate her being with us tonight. She has interest and experience in traditional pioneer crafts, and really, her resume is awesome. You look at this, and it's like she's done some really fun and interesting things over the years to, to really- over the years to, um, to really hone in on, on our heritage and, and, and preserving some of those crafts. Um, storytelling of historic persons and direct ancestry, preservation of historic artifacts and documents, and a, and a strong, uh, appreciation of history and architecture. And as you might know, we're into storytelling about these historic properties, and we're, we have some active and ongoing efforts to tell the stories of, um, Main Street present and past, you know? So there's just some, some excellent experience here that can really, uh, lend a hand on this commission. So that's all I have to say unless you have other questions.
All right, any questions or comments?
Both good choices. I know both of those people.
Yes. Thank you so much for being willing to serve, so we appreciate it. All right, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council consenting to the mayor's appointment of Ken Spence and Rebecca Peterson to the Tuilla City Historic Preservation Commission.
I'll second.
The motion from Councilman Graff, a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Well, I was a hundred and fifty percent in favor until Manzio said she knows them, so.
Hey there.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. That passes five zero.
Chairman, I would just like to also express my appreciation. I have known Ken Spence for many, many years, and he will bring a, a great, um, his architecture and, and bringing that to our community. And Rebecca, thank you very much for being here this evening, and I too read your resume, and I said, I don't know who this is, but we really hit the jackpot here. Very, very excited to have you also serve, um, and thank you. These are volunteers who serve on this committee, give of their time and their talent, so thank you so much. We appreciate your service.
All right, we'll move on to item nine, which is resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council authorizing payment of fee in lieu of water rights conveyance for the lot two A top stop subdivision, presented by Jared Stewart.
Thank you, council. So this, this project, as we reviewed a couple of weeks ago in the, in a work meeting, is for the, uh, non-car wash portions of this, of this, uh, subdivision, right? This is, um, for two to three new retail and commercial structures, including a restaurant, a fast food restaurant, or an automobile service station. So, so they'll, they're hoping to get three in there. It might end up just being two as they design their site and, and depending on the tenants, they're able to lock in. So that, um, brings us to the request of three point three eight acre-feet of water. Um, they estimate it could create up to a hundred and twenty jobs, just depending on what ends up being, uh, in that spot. Uh, generation of, uh, four to twelve million dollars in new taxable sales and a capital of investment of five to eight million dollars. I think all, that, that's, uh, all I have to say on this, and I'll leave it to you for questions. Anything I can answer?
And the two-year deadline.
Oh, yes, and a two, there is a two-year deadline on that water. If they, uh, don't develop by that point, they'll need to, uh, re-approach the council with the request.
Perfect. All right, any other questions or comments? I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, a resolution of Tuilla City Council authorizing payment in lieu, payment of a fee in lieu of water right conveyance for the lot two A top stop subdivision.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman McCall, a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. That passes five zero. Item ten is resolution twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council approving an agreement with Waste Management of Utah, Inc., presented by Paul Hanson, the city engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With your permission, a short historical story. My father was an engineer, and growing up, I've always wanted to be an engineer, but I wanted to be a city engineer because of the diversity that it brought. Well, I'm here to tell you tonight that it's brought a new diversity to me in soliciting proposals for receiving of recyclables for the city, and I blame Michelle for this opportunity. Uh, but it's been a good opportunity. Michelle was fabulous to work for. Tuilla City, uh, as we are all aware, um, has our waste and our recyclers, recyclables picked up by Ace Disposal. They take the trash to the landfill, and the recyclables are currently hauled to Rocky Mountain Recycling, who we've been under contract for some period of time. That contract expires in March of this year. The, uh, administration asked that we put out a request for proposals and pricing to see if there were others that were capable of doing that, and it was challenging because they don't do things the same. It's not like saying, give me a price to build this facility or to put this pipe in the ground. What we ended up doing was we provided a list of eight principal commodities that are recycled, anything from cardboard to certain types of plastic to certain types of paper. Um, and there are commodities that are fairly common on the, on the national market, and we also asked them to give us a price for, uh, waste, because certainly not all of the material that goes in a recyclable can can be recycled under current technology. So we received that, but rather than ask them to project what it would be for the next year, which would be impossible, we gave them a set of scenarios, and we said, assuming our waste consisted of these percentages of these waste, what would your price have been last year, given a certain amount of tons and market prices on a monthly basis for that time? We had two respondents, uh, Rocky Mountain Recycles and Waste Management. You have a copy of a spreadsheet that was prepared as part of the request for information that shows those eight commodities. The upper table with the yellow shows what the commodity value was on the market, and then the lower table calculates what the cost or the revenue to the city would be based on that set of assumed parameters. Uh, the method that they use then to assess their fees is slightly different, but really what we were looking for is, is who gives the city the best benefit for the resources that we have. As we did the analysis, we found that Waste Management actually provided, based under this scenario, a value of somewhere between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars additional value to the city than what Rocky Mountain Recycling is able to do. Again, this is historical rates. Future rates would be based upon market rates for that month, and then the same methodology would be applied and we'll use it. The contract is proposed to be written as a three-year contract to give some stability to them with the option at the city's or their discretion for three one-year extensions. There's no obligation to do the full six years, but if the city is happy and satisfied with them, and to avoid going through this process, again, you have the option of extending this a total of six years. If we want to cancel it at any time, it can be done with appropriate notice prior to the termination of the, of the period. Then there's one other clause, and I gave you a copy of the agreement, um, prior to tonight's meeting, uh, so you could see it. It was inadvertently omitted from the digital package you have. But there's an additional protection from the city that states that should the city stop recycling materials for whatever reason, the contract's done. We're not obligated to pay them for material that we no longer pick up and haul to them. So that was added as a protection for the city as it moves to it. So our recommendation to the council tonight is to approve the receiving center for our recyclables as Waste Management. Again, we can't give you a price because it's all market-driven as we move forward. Uh, but that's our request and our recommendation. I'll let Michelle fill, fill in any blanks that I left out.
You covered it.
Okay, we're good.
Okay, are there any questions or comments?
Seems like a big difference.
It was quite a difference, yeah.
So if there's a, a citizen that wants a new recycling can, is that, is Waste Management providing that, or is it?
No. Ace.
Ace, okay.
Yeah, the.
Because Ace picks up.
Yes.
And delivers.
No, that contract with Ace actually expires, I believe, March of next year, is that right? Sometime next spring?
I think that's something.
Yeah. So for, for at least the next year, Ace will pick up both waste and recyclables. This is only the receiving center that they haul to, and, and Ace has indicated they will haul to either of these companies. They're both neighbors to each other, and this, it does not impact our contract with Ace Disposal. Does not increase the price or the cost, I should say.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, a resolution of Tuilla City Council approving an agreement with Waste Management of Utah Incorporated.
Second.
The motion from Councilman Graff, a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, I also vote aye.
Thank you, council.
That passes five zero. Item eleven is resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifteen, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council approving an agreement with JSX LLC for the Vine Street Sidewalk Improvement Project, presented by Jamie Grandprey, the Public Works Director.
Good evening, council. So I got a resolution for your consideration tonight to finish some sidewalk on Vine Street.
Woo-hoo.
You know, got a section of Vine Street and the north side of, of Vine Street from about four fifty west to five fifty west that is missing sidewalk. And we had put this out to bid to have the sidewalk installed and curb and gutter and road improvements done as well. Kind of hard to probably tell right now, but there is dirt there, not sidewalk asphalt all the way over and missing curb and gutter sidewalks. So this would improve all of those three items. Uh, we did get a grant to, for this project through this UDOT's Safe Routes to School program. We took it, went out to bid, we got three bids back, a hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred eighty-five ninety to about a hundred and seventy-four thousand. And so our lowest responsible bidder is JSX LLC for a hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred eighty-five and ninety cents. And we are asking also for a contingency of seven thousand and fifty dollars to cover anything that could come up with the project. And that's my proposal to you.
How much did the grant cover? Because that was just a sidewalk portion.
Yeah, the grant is ninety thousand. We've spent some of that, we had to, you know, there was some trees there that got taken out last fall. It was about seventeen thousand, nine hundred eighty-five, I believe, and then we had about sixty-two hundred for the design, and then, so we've kind of spent some of that ninety. The, we'll use the rest of the grant and then use some of our storm drain and road C funds to help fund the rest of that project, because there is asphalt, some road improvements being completed, and curb and gutter as well.
Is there curb and gutter on the opposite side of the road?
I don't. Is that?
I don't think.
Not on the opposite.
Yeah, I don't think.
And this is just doing the, the sidewalk in there.
Yeah, this will just be the north side. From the Tuilla High School to Coleman, this would complete that sidewalk on the north side, fill in that gap. That's the only missing gap that we have to get to Coleman.
Okay.
When Jared originally applied for this grant, we tried for both sides of the road, um, but UDOT, um, felt like there were too many property owners on the other side, and it was, it was much more difficult to get that sidewalk done, so we're happy that there will be at least a sidewalk on one side. And only had to deal with one property owner, so that was good.
We do have a power pole that needs to be relocated. We are working with Rocky Mountain Power on that as well, so that we have this sidewalk go straight through without having to go around a power pole.
And then this will just be done when the weather permits, correct?
Yeah, we're trying to get this contract at least going and get it authorized, and then, yeah, kind of, I guess when the weather breaks, they can kind of move in and get that project going. I heard that JSX is doing a project for Stockton currently right now, so this will just be another one, kind of in that same area that they can continue with.
Is there a deadline by when it has to be completed?
I don't know the, grant-wise, Jared, did this have an expiration date for the grant money?
Um, good question. They typically do, but, um, you know, we can extend it. Yeah, it's, I think they're okay.
Okay.
Jamie, if I recall correctly, we've got a contract at the end of July, so it'd be ready for school, and that's what I recall, it could be a statement, that's what I recall.
Yeah, that's, that's what we'll do for the contract with JSX.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
No, just glad it's getting done, and I kind of wish we'd get, get the other side done, even though it's a lot of people we have to talk to and homeowners we gotta.
Yeah.
She's intentionally not looking at it.
We'll still keep that on our radar.
Baby steps, right?
Just, yeah, there's a lot of sidewalk that still needs to be.
Been many years without a sidewalk.
Be happy to have a sidewalk.
That's what I said, I'm glad, on that side.
Okay, I will make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifteen.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. That passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Item twelve is our invoices and purchase orders, presented by Michelle Pitt, the city recorder.
Thank you. We have an invoice to Christensen and Griffith. This is, um, for some repairs at our golf course pavilion that happened from a dam, from damage from a vehicle accident, and we have received reimbursement from the insurance company, so we just need to now pay Christensen and Griffith thirty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. Um, this is an invoice from Summit Energy for the monthly gas service at the Pratt Aquatic Center, ninety-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine, forty-two, just for this month.
Fabulous.
Um, an invoice from Weedner for bunker gear, gloves, hood, hoods, boots for the fire department, thirty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-five, fifty. To Ray Rig Pacific Company for seven hundred and two garbage containers, forty-seven thousand, seventy-six dollars, sixty-four cents. And then to Nickerson Company for the Barrow Well, a hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars. And that's it.
All right. The gas one hurts a little bit, I don't know.
Yeah, it does.
For one month of gas.
That's a lot.
Okay, any questions or comments? I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the invoices and purchase orders.
I'll second, uh, Councilwoman Manzio's motion. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, I also vote aye.
Thank you.
That passes five zero. Thanks, Michelle. Item thirteen is the minutes from the February first, two thousand twenty-three city council RDA work meeting and February first, two thousand twenty-three city council business meeting, and we also have our budget meeting that was held on Monday, February thirteenth, correct? That was thirteenth?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any additions to the minutes or corrections? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second.
The motion from Councilman Graff, a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. That passes five zero. Item fourteen is to adjourn. We adjourned at eight twenty-seven P.M.